A pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person. Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni? Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. McGurven?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, two absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witchy.
I move that we excuse the absent council members.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. Corman, that council excuse council members Person and Pavoni, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, first item on the agenda is a proclamation that we actually added at the last minute here.
Okay. Proclamation, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, pride month, whereas the month of June was designated pride month to honor the Stonewall riots, which is commemorating its 50th anniversary and is generally recognized as the catalyst of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, LGBTQ rights movement, and whereas over 40 years ago, the city of Seattle held its first LGBTQ celebration to encourage residents to honor the history of the fight for equality, celebrate the distance come, and recognize how far there is to go, and whereas Washington State and King County have led the nation in protecting the civil rights of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer neighbors, coworkers, friends, and family members, and whereas while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved, and whereas the city of Renton, in partnership and communication with residents, businesses, and schools, is dedicated to building an inclusive city with opportunities for all, and whereas our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer residents contribute to the cultural fabric of our community and donate their time, talent, labor, and financial resources to various community organizations, and whereas in solidarity with the LGBTQ community, the pride flag will appear at Renton City Hall from June 17th through the 23rd, 2019. Now therefore, I Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 2019 to be lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer pride month in the city of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the special observance and recognize the numerous contributions of LGBTQ individuals in the city, and witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this third day of June 2019, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move that council concur in the proclamation.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. McGurven, that council concur with the proclamation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is Kevin Poole here? Kevin is part of our inclusion task force who is going to be here, so we'll present this to Pretty on behalf of the group. You two will have to smile for the camera.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is a public hearing. Angie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Angie Mathias here to present the bill annexation public hearing this evening. So, the annexation process is a very long process. The petition has been submitted by the petitioner, the 60% petition, and it has been certified by the King County assessor as a valid petition, and so the next step in the process is to hold a public hearing with you here this evening. The purpose is for you, the proponents, to, with, you are holding this public hearing with the proponents to accept or reject the annexation. If you accept it, you can accept all of the annexation or just a portion of the area that was petitioned. This area is located in the east Renton community, or east plateau community planning area, and you can see there a little black and white vicinity map. Again, it's at the eastern portion of our city limits, it's about eight and a half acres in size, its current uses are single-family and vacant. The boundaries are a parcel line to the north that is near southeast Third Place, the east is 154th Avenue Southeast, to the south is a parcel line that is near southeast 139th Place, and to the west, the boundary is 152nd Avenue Southeast. There's an aerial image of the annexation area, you can see that it's a lot of large lots that are largely vacant. More on the existing conditions, regulated slopes, streams, and wetlands, there are none that are in, within the annexation area, and there are none that are within close proximity to this area. Public services, it's currently served by Renton Fire Authority, that would not change upon annexation. Utilities, the Water District 90 and Renton Sewer Utility would not change upon annexation, and the Renton School District serves this area, that also would not change upon annexation. King County has this area designated with their land use designation as urban residential medium, which allows a range of four to 12 dwelling units per acre, and they have zoned it with R4 zoning. Renton has designated the area as residential low density, which would allow resource conservation, R1, or R4 zoning. The area was pre-zoned in 2007, and that would become effective upon, if the annexation becomes effective. We always look at our annexation policies that are in our adopted comprehensive plan. We call for a goal of promoting annexations where and when it's in our best interest. Policy is to support annexations where infrastructure and services allow for urban densities, where it would consolidate service, and/or where it would facilitate the efficient delivery of services. Additionally, that we consider the fiscal impacts for each proposed annexation. So we also look at the boundary review board, if you all approve this annexation this evening, that would be the next step, is to submit it to the King County Boundary Review Board for their approval, so we look at their relevant objectives. One of their objectives is that we use physical boundaries, which include but are not limited to bodies of water, highways, and land contours. This proposed annexation uses entirely parcel lines and roads, which are physical boundaries. Additionally, to prevent the abnormal, abnormally irregular boundaries, this is a very regular boundary, almost precisely a rectangle, to create or preserve logical service areas. All of those service areas are previously agreed to, so they are unchanged with annexation. And then finally, that annexation is of an unincorporated area to a city that is urban in character, and Renton is an urban city. The fiscal analysis, current conditions, there are four dwelling units within the annexation area with an estimated 11 residents. Future conditions, if it were to fully build out under our previous history with R4 zone over the next 10 years, it's estimated that there could be an additional 20 dwelling units there with an additional 56 residents. We always assume that costs increase at 3.5% annually, while revenues increase at 2.5% annually, and that is limited to sales tax, utility tax, and franchise fees. So, as existing to the operating fund, revenues are about $8,000, with costs at about $7,300. If it were to build out fully with those full additional units, at year 10, revenues would be at about $54,000, with costs at about $50,000. To the capital and enterprise funds, revenues currently are at about $1,700, with costs at about $900. Year 10, revenues would be about $8,000, with costs at about $6,300. So we always circulate annexations to all different departments in the city for their review, all the city staff representing those different functions of the city reviewed the annexation and indicated that it was a logical extension of their services. In conclusion, this annexation is in the best interest and general welfare of the city, it's a logical extension of our services, it's consistent with our adopted policies, and it's consistent with the Boundary Review Board criteria. The administration therefore recommends that council accept this direct petition to annex, and that you authorize the administration to forward the notice of intent to the Boundary Review Board.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions from council? Any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so this is a public meeting, and we do have one person here signed up to testify. Can I give your name? Please give your name, city of residence, and for the record, and you have five minutes, Tom Carpenter.
Thank you, I'd like to use this before we start the call, I'd like to use this, is there anything I need to do to set it up, or you need some help setting it up? I've got some maps I'd like to show you. So my name, while he's getting ready, my name is Tom Carpenter, I live a block away from this particular annexation, I've been on the plateau in this particular residence for almost 40 years, so I'm very, very, very familiar with what this area is about. I'm assuming that this annexation will be accepted by the city, and I have no problem with it at all, I'm pretty familiar with the annexation intentions and laws both in King County and here, so it's connected, I think the BRB will be happy with it, so it's not a big deal. What I'd like to talk about a little bit, and take the opportunity here, is to talk a little bit about what next. And to do that, let me talk about this area up here. So to orient you, sorry if the graphics are going to be difficult to read. So, this road right here is May Valley Highway 169, this is southeast 128th, northeast 4th, which is up in the plateau, the annexation area is right here, and what I want to point out is this corridor right here, 154th, 156th, that goes up the hill. Sorry, I can talk louder, I can, whichever you prefer, I'm good at projecting, which would you prefer? Microphone?
That's fine.
Alright, fine. So, the point I'm going to make is this 1.7 mile corridor is an, so these are, the large ones, the orange lines are major arterials, the larger, deeper blue lines are the minor, sorry, the orange lines are the primary arterials, the smaller ones are the minors, and these little ones you can, in here, are the collector distributors. So the only thing you're seeing on this in terms of the road network are the arterials. This is the only north route off of May Valley Highway between Cedar Grove Road and Interstate 405, which is about 7.3 miles, the data in here is, I don't want to read the data for you. It's about halfway, it's a little bit closer to the city than it is to Maple Valley. However, that makes this corridor of interest, and it's of interest because of traffic. So let's take, we're going to change scale a little bit here. Hope visuals are better than just talking, so. So now we're coming in a little bit closer, what you'll see down here, just to make a note, this AM commute, just to give you a sense of what happens in here, those of you that are familiar with this area, know for about two hours in here, there's a stoplight in here, and there's a stoplight in here in the road that goes up to Fairwood, that this backup is for two hours, et cetera. And similarly, when we're seeing this traffic from the north, so all I'm trying to point out is, this is a big deal corridor, and I know of no other plans to either deal with adding new corridors or lanes and things like that. So unfortunate, not unfortunately, sorry, my, I'm not here to be critical of anything the city's done. This area that you're seeing a little bit in gray, that's the current city limits, which means this corridor is passing from King County through the city, King County back to the city, and this is where the developments are occurring. So the last chart I want to show you then, I'm sorry, the next last chart, is one that we zoom in a little bit closer. Sorry. Oh, we'll use this one. So this is the same perspective, these are the annexations, by the way, Angie, this on the posters in the neighborhood is called the Chambers Annexation, and it's a seven and a half acre mark up there, so I don't think, I'm not arguing the technicality should change anything, but just be aware, there's a slight technicality issue, like you guys get fixed in the future. These are really indications of annexation areas, and the coloring, if you can see the scale up here, is the, these are the current ones that are, off of your GIS data, these are the ones since 1994, I've lived there since 1980, and these are the ones that are in the last 10 years have been here. So what you can see, not surprisingly, is a lot of 60, and these are all 60% annexations. So this annexation over here is where the development's going, which it should be, that's what GMA wants, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, we're pretty clear on that, that that's it. By the way, this hash line is the rest of your PAA up in here. So this area in here, as we dive down now even closer, these are old graphics that were showing plotted areas, so don't pay attention to that, all I want to do is, here's the road again, the annexation area we're talking about is right in here, there is no electronic control to get traffic off of this arterial, minor arterial, onto this collector over here, so this becomes a problem when people are going up. I live right here, here, so I use this intersection all the time. Now, this is, I fully recognize this is in the county. So one of the challenges we as residents have in dealing with jurisdictions, particularly when we're trying to get our voice in about what the character of this neighborhood to be, is the fact that it's very clear, not negative, very clear, that these jurisdictional boundaries become a big problem for us, the funding would have, you get the idea, so you've been through all this nonsense. So, all I'm saying is that this whole area in here is where this development has occurred. So, I'm asking, because if, as you pointed out in the, Angie, in the intro, in 2007, the only non-60% annexation was attempted on the plateau, almost all of that PAA area was attempted, it went down 60/40, even though we, I got out of that area based on some pre-survey areas that we felt were going to be against annexation. When I say we, let me back up a second, I am a long-term member, board member, and officer of 501(c)(3) Corporation up on the plateau that is working in the community, I'm also here representing another one, another annexation, or another PAA, no, sorry, another 501(c) called CARE that you guys have dealt with, Gwen High, et cetera. These people are very, very active in this area, and the county has moved forward, its new Department of Local Services, there's a lot more attention on this sort of stuff, but for some reason or other, what's frustrating us is we're having a problem getting PAA conversations to exist between the two jurisdictions, hopefully with an ILA, that engages the community, particularly the leaderships in the community, to be able to start talking about it as we did in 2007. As you recall, there was pre-annexation, so we had to do pre-zoning, et cetera, I'm sorry, I'm over.
That's okay, because we interrupted you, and then we were helping you with the machine, so I'm gonna give you a couple.
So, when you have enough to say so, I apologize, I want to be sensitive to other people's time, this is the last graphic I'm going to show you. But at the time, if you recall, Mr. Mayor, I met with you, and, by the way, I apologize, I did not handle that meeting well, meaning I didn't prepare well, but the one thing I wanted to know was, what's the mayor's position, or the city's position, relevant to conversations about trying to meaningfully participate, have residents meaningfully participate in these decisions that are affecting the future of their communities, and obviously annexations and the development that follows are big impacts for us? How do we make sure we go forward with the least amount of impact that we possibly can have on that? So that's been the paradigm all along. Unfortunately, and it's rightfully, the city's position was, we're done spending money on this stuff, if the city, if the residents don't come forward, well, everything's a 60% annexation, and nobody's engaging with the residents relevant to that stuff, other than these public hearings. Last graphic. So, part of this was the transportation issue, so we're building along that, the egress, ingress points for the developments are right onto 150, or 156th, I don't have a better solution to that, but we're constantly adding this stuff to what I think is a very, very important corridor, at least in this particular area. But the other part of this is the character of the neighborhood, and one of the things that we did when we were in the 2007 effort with you all, was, I think you updated, you already had a tree retention ordinance, that was one of the things that was modified, and I, my, I don't recall exactly, but it made for a lot more replacements when you did stuff. Unfortunately, it didn't address the question of cluster development, and when cluster development occurs, what we see is a pattern of tree retention, particularly the large vegetation, that is totally out of character with the neighborhood, or with the community. This may be, is as difficult, I will, I won't expect you to read this, but let me just see if I can point out something here. The annexation area we're talking about is right here. You can hardly see it, but this is, these are 100-foot tall fir trees, and those of you familiar with the plateau know that the plateau's identity are these hard, large trees, now, some of the residents would just soon see them go for safety purposes, but that's not what we're seeing up here. If you look at the annexations and the developments that have occurred in here, these are completely clear-cut. So, all I'm asking, as we prepare for the next step beyond the annexation, can we possibly get back into a conversation, at least long enough, to figure out if there's something that we can do to try to improve what seems so intuitively obvious to me, and that is an ILA between the two jurisdictions that are involved in this stuff, and a meaningful conversation with the residents about the future of their communities? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom, and I, I just want to let you know that the council is going to be having some discussions on how we're going to continue to deal with annexations, and we'll just make sure to keep you plugged in, so we can discuss some of these specific things that we're.
I will send you, by the way, there's a written comment, I've got suggestions on how we would approach this discussion and dialogue, as I've mentioned, there's changes that have happened in King County with the new, with John Taylor as the new Department of Local Services, there's some emphasis in that arena, the timing may be right for us, or the, and also the county went from the unincorporated area council model to the community service model, so there's a whole maturation that's occurred since the 2007 time, now might be a really good time for us to have this conversation, and possibly pioneer something that will allow this meaningful engagement, without turning it into a debate as to whether we should annex or not annex. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Carpenter's here, can I, can I ask one more thing? I, so I, thank you for, for all the sharing, and I think you bring up a really valid point as these annexations come along, several really valid points. I am, I've, I've heard quite a, quite a bit of feedback from residents up there about that intersection that you identified, and sound like there's cases of road rage and frustration.
Are you talking about the one where they doesn't have the control?
Yes, yes.
Yes, in fact, there's one of the residents on the hill just across of it, used to keep track of the accidents data and stuff like that, I would rather, I would, before believing that, I'd rather see the data as recorded by the people where the accident reports are, but nonetheless, it, it's, it's, I don't want to make this worse than it is, there's a good understanding in the people that commute on this particular route, that you've got to let left turn coming up the hill during the, and you got to let in, but it's an uncontrolled intersection, on the intersection of, the intersection of two arterials, and that's all I'm saying is, it's just an accident, I'm not trying to be negative here, it's just an accident rate.
All I was going to do was just, just suggest that, I mean, I'm wondering if that issue could almost be broken apart from everything else, or I'd love to get kind of a briefing, Mr. Mayor, if that be possible, from our transportation staff on, on, on what that intersection looks like now, and what our engineers think would be the correct way to fix it.
We'll get something due, because we've been dealing with it in recent months, so.
Yeah, and I mean, all the other issues seem important in the long-term planning, but it almost seems like we could figure, you know, at least figure out what's possible, what we're asking the county to do, and move forward on that, so.
And it might be, just to end this comment, it might be that rerouting that collector arterial might be the rise move, because we know more today because of the annexations, et ceteras, than we knew 40 years ago, so with that, thank you very much, I appreciate the extra time.
You bet, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Ms. Perez, that we close the public meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move that the council accept a 60% direct petition to annex, authorize the administration to forward the notice of intent to the Boundary Review Board. Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with administration's recommendation to accept a 60% direct petition to annex, any question or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Angie. Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor, I have, good evening, council, I have two items for you this evening. The first item is the spring recycle event that occurred on Saturday, and the solid waste utility held its spring recycle event on May 11th, with several team members from Public Works, police, and members from Republic Services, along with eight volunteers. The event collected over 85 tons of recyclable materials and 605 gallons of household hazardous waste. Residents who could bring a donation for the food bank ended up filling a 96-gallon cart filled with donated food for the food bank, so overall, it turned out to be a very successful day. The second item is, the farmer's market opens again tomorrow, June 4th, at Piazza Park, the mayor will be officially ringing the bell at 3:00 PM to kick off the 18th season of our Renton Farmer's Market. As you may know, the market's open from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM on every Tuesday from June 4th until September 24th, at Piazza Park located in downtown Renton, at the corner of South 3rd and Burnout Avenue. In addition to market fair, shoppers can enjoy live music, tips from master gardeners, cooking demonstrations, and several children's activities. And new this year, Logan Avenue South will be closed between Piazza Park and Gateway Park, making it that much easier to cross the street to get to the food trucks that are, that show up there. So, lastly, we're proud to continue the Fresh Bank, Fresh Bucks incentive program, which offers unlimited dollar-for-dollar matches to be used on fresh produce for those individuals who shop and use SNAP. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, moving on to audience comments, I have three people signed up to address the council, when I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, you have five minutes, we have a timer in front here with a light on it, and first is Jason Collins. I'm sorry, Jason, you need to come up to the podium here?
Alright, so, look at. I do not do well in front of people, but I'm here to ask about the homeless shelter, I heard that they're moving one of them due to probably funding issues, because nobody goes to church anymore, and I'm wondering if you guys actually do provide funding for shelters in the city of Renton, because I've lived here on North 4th for a year, and then I lived out on 18708 and 108th Lane, right, so like, I've been put into a position by other people that I've had to look into how it is that you guys handle this situation, since it does not discriminate, right, like, it does not tell you when it's coming, alright, like, it's becoming an issue because of taxes and inflation, that the, those on fixed incomes can't afford to live, and I'm seeing them in their house, their cars sleeping in like the library parking lot, I'm like, Vince, if everything doubted, families breaking up, and them trying to split to hold two separate houses, and all your family, it's absolutely unreal, and it's only getting worse. The, you guys putting people into jails where they don't even give you a food handler's card when you leave, you can't get a job in Washington without cert, period, alright, like, you have to have certifications to have a decent job, like, you should not be spending 60, $120 a day on any, anything, period, unless it is going to get your citizens a certification so that they are no longer stealing, there are people in jail that think that boosting is a job, alright, like, absolutely unfucking real. They, the, the, the programs like Reach are really good, I'm not going to argue with that, but you have to have multiple of them, and I don't understand if they're all funded through social people that decide to spend their money on religious affiliations or whatever, and those non-for-profits decide to spend their money on, like, that's great and all, but where does yours go, can it go into RTC and get people certifications to have a job later? I mean, like, if, they say that there are repeat offenders everywhere, and it's on the news, everybody sees it, now, what are you actually doing to stop the repeat offenders? Are you giving them a hope, or, I mean, are you just encouraging them to fail? I've had things like, the police, I never, you know, I don't like to talk crap, but like, I got stuff on my, I've like documented things publicly in order to stop, get them to stop doing things, I tried to have a meeting with somebody, it was all off slander from an old boss, alright, like, so, if you can imagine my frustration with your inability to provide a place for my papers and effects, like, in Article 4, that is safe from people just taking them, then I would not be here today, I'm sorry, but this is, it's absolutely unreal, and I'm, actually, I could probably go get a job, I'm actually looking into how other homeless people expect to get off the street, and work in a day labor job, you, it needs to be structured in order to get them back on a week-to-two-week paycheck, so that they can actually have a substantial amount of money given to them at once in order to save money to be paid for your first, last, and security, if your landlord did not take your first, last security, sell all your, because you went to jail for two weeks, and for a competency test, and they charged, the cops told them that, you know, he wasn't coming back within 30 days, so they use a 30-day abandonment law with a 60-day right to a speedy trial in order to get rid of all your shit, alright, like, that is an outrageous deal that apparently can happen, as long, well as blackmail, honestly, like, stopping people from getting their phone calls when they should, but these things can and do happen, and I'm sorry, but how do you guys go about fixing these issues so that families with children do not have to move to a place where the, the quality of life is so much, I mean, they got kids in this Harambe, right, that might possibly move or whatever, I don't know, I just went to church there one day and overheard it, right? But it kind of pisses me off, because I'm like, spend, I'm a working male, who works 60 to 80 hours a week, doing my trade, which is signage, alright, put up signs all over this greater Seattle area, I pay in my entire halftime when I work an 80-hour week, alright, the entire halftime goes to taxes, alright? Like, absolutely unreal how much taxes I pay. Now, when I struggle and fall, all that tax money has gone with no way for me to find out where it went, and if you even look up the state audit on SCORE, they can't get past RCW 368.8, and actually look at their books to find out who's actually making money off of private slash public jail, I mean, it's unreal, unless my internet is that bad that I only get fake internet, which would be absolutely unreal to me, but.
I'm sorry, Jason, your five minutes are up.
Alright, and I get that, so I'll sign up next week, and I'll continue, but like, I'm dead serious, like, could you guys please look into these issues so that you can fund more than one Reach program, so they can work together to construct, and, you know, compete, and cooperate, and all those things, because the $60 a day you spend on SCORE versus $60 a day that you'd spend on something like that, you're going to get more bang for your buck from RTC or a Reach program than you are from a place where they put you in a box.
I agree.
And tell you not to do anything, I mean, it's just. I mean, it's just, it's, it's insanity to complete, continue.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got, I have to, your time is up.
Expecting different results from the same thing.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Next is Mario Terrell.
I would like to come back at another day to go over what I have to speak with you all about, okay?
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Welcome anytime. Uh, next is, is it Kel Comin, Comin, Cominiki?
Cominiki.
Yeah, I'm sorry to.
Sorry you can't read it.
No.
I live at 703 South 32nd Street. We have noise coming from CTAC, Boeing Field, Renton Field, Air 7, and Air 4 and 5, 24 hours a day. That the, Air 7 and 4 and 5 don't seem to have a stealth mode that they can use to keep it, keep the water, water washed down. The other problem we have is nuisance, Harley-Davidson, Spot Tavern, Bandido Hoco Lounge, continue to run up and down the street from Southeast 41st to Southeast 43rd late Saturday night and Saturday night. Sunday morning, they started out running around down there at 9:30 in the morning. They didn't, I finally called 911, registered a complaint, and the officer went down, he says, "I've been here for 10 minutes, and I've heard a thing." Well, he, then once they saw him come, they stopped. And about 10 minutes after he left, they started up again, and they kept right on going. It's just getting, it's just, can't go out and enjoy your deck in the evening, can't barbecue, can't have people over, because you can't talk. There's just so much noise from those guys, and it goes to, by the time that Spot lets out and Hoco Lounge lets out, at 2:30, 3:30, 4:30 in the morning, it just continues. I realize the officers have something else to do, but maybe, maybe you can get together and just nuisance, make a nuisance call on them. Excessive noise, disturbing the peace, expired license, no license. Go after them, and keep after them. I mean, the whole hill over here, from the hospital on up, we get it every weekend. It's really getting tiring. I hate the move. I've lived there for almost 30 years. So whatever you can do, we'd appreciate, I'd appreciate.
You bet. I just wanted to tell you, thank you for coming. And as long as I've been here at the city, this has been an issue, so I know exactly what you're saying. We've put a lot of emphasis, and we continue to put a lot of emphasis on that area because of this particular problem. The racing and the loud noises and that sort of thing. We're, we're, we're running into problems now. We've pretty much shut it down on Renton streets, but where we're having some real significant problems is the, they know that as soon as you get on the other side of the street, on Northeast 43rd, I think, or 180th, that they're in Kent. And, and so a lot of that is happening in Kent. Kent is trying to come up with a program to eradicate it from their streets. They're going to be doing some creative things, as a matter of fact, this summer, to try and shut it down. So that, that's part of the problem. The other part of the problem is they're racing on 167. And we've got the State Patrol coming out as often as they can to try to address that. So we're, just so you know, because I, I understand what you're saying, but we, I want you to know, we are still on that. We're, we're doing everything we can.
Be the neighborhood from wherever we start to wherever we end, would really appreciate anything that you can do to.
You bet.
Alleviate all that noise. I mean, like I said, the airports, you know, the big, the big heavies go out at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night from CTAC, they rev them up for quite a while before they take off.
Right.
So you get all that noise. Anything to reduce a little bit of it would be appreciated. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for coming. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, we have six items for council consideration. Are there any items that councilmember like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I'd like to pull item E.
Okay. Any other items? Ms. Witchy?
Um, I need that we approve the consent agenda as written minus item E.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. Corman, that you approve the consent agenda this evening minus item E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Prince, item E.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Instead of referring this to the finance committee, we'd like to send this council concur.
Okay. So is that a motion?
I move we make item E, council concur.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that item E be approved this evening. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, Ms. Witchy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Report has one committee report.
Okay, Community Services Committee, committee report. Appointments to the Renton Senior Citizens Advisory Board. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm mayor laws appointments to the Renton Senior Citizens Advisory Board. That's Mr. Jack Wardell, Ms. Midge Charbonneau, Ms. Anita Dole, Ms. Susan Bollinger, Ms. Christine Grace Scott, Mr. Ronald Urb, and Ms. Julie Haran, for terms expiring June 1st, 2022. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witchy.
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Community Services Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. McIrvin, that council concur with the Community Services Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Mr. McIrvin.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and then Mr. Prince?
Yes, the finance committee has a committee report.
Finance Committee, committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable, total payment of $7,078,756.55 for a number of vouchers, which are available at the city clerk's office, and payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and two wire transfers. Also payroll, total payment of $1,505,715.81 for payroll vouchers, including 697 direct deposits and 21 checks. That's the April 16th through 30th, 2019 pay period, and a Kidder Matthews payment of $44,566.56. This is signed by the committee vice chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move that council concur in the finance committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Witchy, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jason. No legislation, so moving on to new business, Ms. Witchy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of Council member person, the committee of the hall will meet on Monday, June 10th, at 5:30 PM in the Conference Center. We have four items on the agenda. Oversized vehicle parking, public art, the Renton Loop, downtown revitalization update, and emerging issues.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a public safety committee meeting to announce for June 10th at 5:15 PM in the council conference room. Two items on that agenda.